Hi, this is Boa van der Iems, chairman of the Pestalotzi Trust. This video is a presentation on the progress of the Basic Education Laws Amendment Act, or BALA bill, the impact that the bill could have on your life, and then it will give some guidelines of how to prepare for the oral hearings that are planned for February and March and the rest for this year on the BALA bill. So I'm just going to share my presentation now. BALA bill stands for the Basic Education Laws Amendment Bill. A bill is a proposal to amend a law. In this case, the BALA bill proposes to amend the SA Schools Act and the Employment of Educators Act. As parents, it is the amendments to the SA Schools Act that will affect us. Although small amendments were regularly made to the SA Schools Act in the past, this is the first major revision of the SA Schools Act since it was promulgated in 1996. Firstly, we must understand the why of the BALA bill or the driving forces behind it. Secondly, this presentation also looks at the expected impact of the BALA bill and verifies whether this actually realizes the driving forces. Thirdly, I will give an overview of the progress of the BALA bill thus far. And lastly, I will explain how the public hearings will work, why home educators should attend these and how you can prepare for it. Bills are designed to realize a specific intention. For example, the law requiring the residents to stop at a red light has the intention to improve road safety for all. In the memorandum that accompanied the BALA bill, the minister claims that its intention is to, and I quote, "align them with the developments in the education landscape and to ensure that systems of learning and excellence in education are put in place in a manner which respects, protects, promotes, and fulfills the right to basic education." This is a noble intention with which nobody will disagree, but it's not possible to work out how the proposed amendments will realize the intention, especially in the light of the fact that the DBE has done no research on home education. Furthermore, the socio-economic impact assessment is supposed to contain an explanation of the intention and an analysis of the various ways in which the intention can be realized. The socio-economic impact assessment, or CIAS, that was done contains no meaningful information about the intention related to home education. Given the absence of a clearly articulated intention, we can then look for guidance on the government's ideology. Ideology defines the principles that drive the laws and policies that political leaders make. This slide gives a summary of the education ideology of the South African government. Firstly, the slogan of the Department of Basic Education, or DBE, is that, quote, "Every child is a national asset." The screenshot above is from the DBE website. This means that government believes that children are their property. Children are important to them to realize their goals. Secondly, government believes that education can only be provided by the education system and that there should be one education system. Things like home education and independent schools are described as different sectors that are part of the one system. This education system is under the control of the minister and MECs, and one of the purposes of the system is to transfer the values of government to learners. The next slide will give more evidence on this. When the SA Schools Act was drafted in 1996, it was probably thought that home education would remain a fringe phenomenon, and therefore government gave into pressure and made provision for it in section one of the Schools Act. After 1996, government also did not pay any significant attention to home education. However, home education grew exponentially since then, and the census of 2011 reported 56,000 home learners. It was clear that home education was not a fringe phenomenon anymore. Government had to do something. Government does not openly state its ideology. It quietly realizes it over a long period under a cloak of promoting quality, fighting discrimination, protecting children, and other noble intentions that nobody will disagree with. However, sometimes information becomes available that shows the real intentions of government. In reaction to a question in parliament in 2012, the Minister of Basic Education answered that she is busy with legislation that will make home education part of the school system. Thus becoming part of the school system mean that the same curriculum enrolling for a grade and doing all subjects at the same grade level in the same year will be applied to home education as this is done in schools? Some more statements on home education are shown in this slide. In the Strategy and Tactics document of the ANC in 2001 and later, the ANC states that education must be used to transfer new values to society. Ministers are then responsible to introduce legislation in line with a party policy. A WITZ EPU paper quoted in a Umalusi report on home education in 2010 states that parents should not be allowed to use curriculum other than the national curriculum stated. In a tweet of 2014, the Minister of Basic Education says that she teaches children to vote for the ANC. During a meeting in 2017, the Council of Education Ministers considered the scrapping of home education. In 2018, senior management in the DBE and the Council of Education Ministers considered the introduction of stringent measures to deter parents from choosing home education. In 2022, the Office of the Chief State Law Advisor, or OXLA, gives an opinion that no alternative curriculums should be allowed in independent schools. This could also be applied to home education. Many parents have other views on education. They do not want to be part of the failing, centrally controlled, one-size-fits-all education system. Parents want the freedom to choose the curriculum that best promotes the interest of each individual child. They want children to progress at their own pace and allow them to do subjects they find interesting on different grade levels in the same year. Parents want to transfer their values to their children. It is obviously that this is a polar opposite of the ideology of government. This is why home educators have been and for the foreseeable future will be in conflict with government. This is why home educators must use every opportunity to resist attempts to take away their children's right to receive the best education. Unfortunately, the BALA bill will give the minister the necessary power to make home education part of the formal school system. To prescribe curriculum and assessment can give education and give educations unfettered access to the private homes of home educators and punish non-compliance with severe penalties. It also gives the minister wide powers to make regulations on home education. These regulations can be used to prescribe in the finest details the extent to which the curriculum must be followed and how the learner should be assessed. Over time, it can transform home education into public school education at home. All the benefits of home education can be lost, such as allowing children to progress at their own pace and following their own interests. To do public school education at home will be a nightmare and parents will return their children to schools. In the previous dispensation on home education, it was illegal and parents were sent to jail. In the current dispensation, home education will be legal, but for all practical purposes, impossible. It has to be emphasized that the BALA bill as it stands will not immediately make home education impossible. It merely gives the minister the power to prescribe curriculum and assessment on a high level. Through the one after the other regulation, home education will become progressively difficult until it's practically impossible. This is a tried and tested method of governments compared to putting a frog in water and bringing it to boiling point over time. Fortunately, the BALA bill is currently just a proposal to amend the law and cannot be enforced. It has to go through a process before it becomes a law, and only then can it be enforced. The steps of the process are the following. Firstly, the minister appoints a task team to draft a law to realize certain political intentions. This task team follows a process known as the pre-parliamentary process. When the bill is ready, it is tabled at parliament. There it follows the parliamentary process. After the bill is approved by parliament, it's handed to the president for signature and it becomes a law that can be enforced. This is known as the post-parliament process. After the bill becomes the law, the minister can start promulgating regulations in terms of the law. Regulations determine in detail how a law will be enforced. Home education will become progressively difficult until it's practically impossible. It is probably then when the minister starts to enforce these regulations on home education that legal challenge will ramp up significantly. The pin shows where in the progress we are at the moment. The next slides will explain all these processes and how the home education movement engaged with government in these processes. Firstly, the pre-parliament process. The task team for the BALA bill was appointed in 2013 and started drafting the bill. An official of the Western Cape Education Department was part of the task team and responsible for the sections on home education. The Western Cape Education Department attempted to introduce the contemplated home education changes by adopting it as a policy in the Western Cape in 2014. However, when Cape home educators received a copy of this draft policy, it caused so much public uproar that it was hastily withdrawn. A draft version of the BALA bill was published for public participation in 2017. There was a severe reaction to this bill, not only from homeschoolers but also from the school sector. About 5,000 letters were sent to the DBE, of which 1,000 were from home educators. Although home learners are about 1% of the school population, they generated about 20% of the letters. After going through the comments, the DBE engaged in a number of stakeholder consultations at the beginning of 2020. The Pestalotzi Trust was one of the stakeholders that had a meeting with the minister. During this meeting, the minister indicated that she did not support the requirements of a pre-registration home visit. The Pestalotzi Trust also pointed out that the SA Schools Act is not an appropriate instrument to regulate home education, but the minister felt that the BALA bill was too far down the road to consider alternative regulatory frameworks. After this, the bill was revealed by Netlak, a body consisting of government unions and business. The next step was a review by the Office of the Chief State Law Advisor, or OXLA, to check for constitutional issues. The Pestalotzi Trust used this opportunity to submit a legal opinion from their legal team on the provision for home visits, which infringes on the constitutional right to privacy. Despite the opinion of the minister and the legal opinion, home visits were not removed from the BALA bill. In 2021, the presidency performed a socio-economic impact assessment of the bill, or CIA. A CIA must be done for every draft bill, policy, or regulation. The CIA that was done for BALA bill and published in 2017 did not consider home education at all. For this reason, the Pestalotzi Trust engaged with the DBE to point out that there was insufficient research on home education to perform as a meaningful CIA for the home education laws. In the absence of the research, the Pestalotzi Trust provided the result of surveys. Unfortunately, these inputs were not used in the CIA. The next step was for BALA bill to be adopted by the Council of Education Ministers, or KIM. The Pestalotzi Trust used this as an opportunity to launch a letter-writing campaign to the MECs in the provinces to urge them to engage with home educators in their province before adopting the bill during the upcoming KIM meeting. The end result of this was that Mariki Ukerman from Cape Home Educators was appointed on the Education Council of the Western Cape. After adoption by KIM, the bill was considered by the ministers of the social cluster, which includes health, education, and social development. The final step was to submit the bill to cabinet. When the Pestalotzi Trust learned that the bill would be tabled at cabinet, it wrote letters to the presidents to urge the cabinet not to adopt the BALA bill due to the lack of research, flaws in the CIA, and constitutional flaws. It is our record that this request was not attended to. Early in 2022, the BALA bill was tabled in parliament. In parliament, there are two houses, namely the National Assembly and the National Council of Provinces. The National Assembly consists of 400 members who are elected every five years using a party-less proportional representation system. The National Council of Provinces represents the governments of the provinces rather than directly representing the people. Some bills have to go through the National Assembly, where others have to pass through both houses. The BALA bill was tagged as a so-called Section 76 bill, which means it has to pass through both houses. If there is a conflict between the houses, there is then a conflict resolution process. This slide describes the process that the bill goes through in the National Assembly. The bill is processed by the Portfolio Committee on Basic Education, or PCBE, which prepares the bill for submission to the House. The first part of processing the bill is about public participation, which in turn consists of a number of phases. The first phase was to get written submissions from the public. For the BALA bill, this was done between May and July 2022. The PCBE then appointed a processing team to go through all the written submissions. The reaction of the public was overwhelming to such an extent that the PCBE had to appoint additional people to the processing team. The home education movement was also very successful in this phase because an estimated 13% of the 18,000 submissions came from home educators. The quality of the submissions to the Pestalotzi campaigns was very high, and we are thankful for the effort that our members put into it. The trust also captured feedback from 1,554 parents in a survey that was submitted to the PCBE. Again, home educators punched above their weight. The outcome of this was that home education was identified as one of the eight emerging themes by the processing team. This makes it impossible for parliament to ignore home education. The home education movement was also then given four out of the 31 slots to make oral submissions. The second phase then was to make oral submissions. Four education organizations, home education organizations, were invited: the Pestalotzi Trust, Learn Free, the Gauteng Association for Homeschooling, and the National Association for Homeschooling. As part of the submission of the National Association, Mike Donnelly from the Homeschool Legal Defense Association, the USA, presented a perspective from international law and the USA experience. Although not a home education organization, Christian View also gave significant attention to home education. Through these organizations, home education is featured in all four rounds of the public hearings. All the presentations were well-prepared and were well-received by the PCBE. It built on the written submissions by establishing the home education movement as a force to be reckoned with to such an extent that it influenced the decision of the PCBE in their choice of an international study tour. A summary of the narratives that were presented during the oral hearings is given in the next slide. This slide shows the positions taken by the different presenters on home education. The positions refer to clause 37, which is the clause in the BALA bill that proposes amendments to section 51 of the SA Schools Act, which deals with home education. Firstly, Christian View presented in round one on 8 November. They argued that clause 37 infringes on the rights of parents to choose an education for their children in line with their religious beliefs. Pestalotzi Trust presented in round two on 15 November. The presentation was done by Boa van der Iems, and he was supported by a delegation that participated in the Q&amp;A afterwards. The delegation consisted of Karin van Oostrem, Lebohan Norbo, Lita van der Iems, Naresch Padal, and Shaun Green. Their narrative was that BALA bill uses inappropriate penalties to enforce stringent registration conditions designed to make home education impossible with no basis in research. Home education and other non-school education modalities must be regulated outside the SA Schools Act with a fair framework based on research and collaboration. Learn Free presented in round three on 22 November. The presentation was done by Christopher Caderow. He was supported by a delegation consisting of Bronwyn Murray, Kath Kenyon, Shiraz Koer, or Koer, sorry, operators of microschools, Anel Berger, a homeschool mother and activist, and Francois Berger, a homeschooler. Their narrative is that clause 37 is a rehashed version of the failed 2014 home education policy of the Western Cape Education Department, which was hastily withdrawn after a reaction of the home education movement. Home education, learners with special education needs, rural education, and new education modalities should be accommodated in a new education architecture in line with the Children's Act, Child Justice Act, International Law, and Best Practices. The Gauteng Association for Homeschooling presented in round four on 29 November. The presentation was done by Lali Moraba, and she was supported by a delegation that participated in the Q&amp;A afterwards. The delegation consisted of Shaline Chavet Swart, Janette Kieswetter, Dehilla Green, and Sikombozu Dlormo. Their narrative was that home education is a natural extension of parenting and should be regulated like other forms of parental care. The Association for Homeschooling, or the National Association, also presented in round four on 29 November. The presentation was done by Mariki Ukerman of the association and Mike Donnelly from the USA, and they were supported by Ruwan Ukerman, Lizelle Rademeyer, and Jennifer Hanakom that participated in the Q&amp;A. Their narrative was that home education is an internationally recognized human right. The United States experience shows that more regulation does not improve education outcomes. Reasonable regulation should be based on notification and contingency monitoring. As the time goes by, the positions of the different parties are becoming progressively clearer. This slide gives a preliminary articulation of the positions. The position of government is that parents may only start homeschooling after permission is granted by the state on condition that they agree to preemptive monitoring based on the state curriculum. However, if things go wrong with the education of a child, it will not be possible to hold the state accountable for this. For example, no education official or teacher has ever been held accountable for a child dropping out of school. This position can therefore be described as state control without accountability. Preemptive monitoring means regular and compulsory monitoring, even if there's no need for it. The position articulated by the Association for Homeschooling is that it would not be unreasonable to expect home educators to merely notify the state when they educate their children at home and when there are reasonable grounds to suspect education neglect require contingency monitoring. Such a position does not infringe on the rights and freedoms of homeschooling families and is in line with the Children's Act. This position can be summarized as freedom with accountability because parents are given freedom but are also expected to be accountable. Contingency monitoring means monitoring only when a possible problem was identified with the purpose of determining the extent of the problem and the remedy. After written and oral submissions, the third phase in the public participation process of the BALA bill will be the public hearings. This is what's going to happen now in the beginning of 2023. During the oral submissions in parliament, the PCBE heard feedback from well-preferred expert and representative organizations. However, during the public hearings, the focus is to get feedback from the general public that will be affected by the BALA bill. The PCBE wants to know that objections to the BALA bill are not only from a few well-organized activist organizations but also have support on ground level from the general public. This is illustrated by the following sentence from the minutes of the PCBE, and I quote, "Members noted and deduced a well-orchestrated opposition to the bill but would not necessarily reflect perceptions at large." To align with the purpose of the public hearings and to build on the previous phases, the critical success factors for the hearings should be the following. Firstly, good attendance is necessary to physically demonstrate that the home education movement is a sector that cannot be ignored. Secondly, the presentation should focus on how the essential objectives to the BALA bill will practically affect families. Secondly, presentations should focus on how the essential objectives to the Bala Bill will practically affect families. To ensure good attendance, you can do the following. SMS message was sent to Pestalotsi Trust members in the different provinces. This SMS contains a link to a WhatsApp group for that province. The purpose of the WhatsApp group is to make the necessary logistical arrangements to attend public hearings in that province and encourage and prepare for the public hearings. Two, once you have joined the WhatsApp group, share the link of the group with family and friends and ask them to join and attend the hearings. Three, the Pestalotsi Trust will organize a number of Q&amp;A sessions on Zoom to prepare parents for the public hearings. There will be a number of such sessions to ensure that all can attend. The invites to the Q&amp;A sessions will be distributed via the WhatsApp groups. Fourthly, feel free to bring your children. Children are welcome as long as they do not disrupt the meeting. During the oral hearings, one of the unique things that distinguished home educators from the other parties was that they were not merely organizations that represented an abstract community. They were people that actually practice home education and that will be affected by the bill. When you bring your children along, it enforces that. Members of the PCBE will actually see the children that will be affected by the bill they are considering. And fifthly, even if you're not willing to talk at the public hearings, make an effort to attend it. It will serve to encourage those that will be speaking. It is a great opportunity to meet other homeschooling families. It is not only fun but an educational experience and part of making history. Members of the Executive Committee of the Pestalotsi Trust endeavor to attend as many as these hearings as possible and are looking forward to meet you. This table lists the locations and dates for the public hearings that are currently available. So the intention is to do six provinces in the first quarter or in the second quarter of 2023 and then, uh, no, sorry, it is the first quarter and then uh, the rest in the second quarter of 2023. This is a graphical presentation of the locations for public hearings. It should be noted that the hearings generally focus on rural areas. Now, some guidelines on what you should say at these hearings. Firstly, you are the expert on how the Bala Bill will affect your family. Nobody can dispute what you say about your family. The PCBE needs to hear how their decisions will affect your family. To build on what was done up till now, families must give testimonies of essential objections to the Bala Bill that have been raised already. Firstly, start on a positive note and explain that home education, what home education has done for your family. Also remember that the presentation is not only for members of the PCBE but also for the audience. Perhaps some of the members of the audience will ask you about home education and you can make a difference in their life. Every new family that chooses home education might be a family member of a member of parliament, a union leader, a judge, an education official, et cetera, making it increasingly difficult to prosecute homeschoolers. Secondly, explain why does not make sense why you have to ask permission to educate your children. Officials that might not understand home education, the law on home education or your circumstances. Officials with a vested interest in the public school system. Thirdly, families that use non-CAPS curriculums must explain how these curriculums have benefited their children and how it will harm their children if they are not allowed to use the curriculums anymore. What will be the effect of these children if they are assessed annually by external assessors against the CAPS curriculum? Families that currently use CAPS must consider how they will be affected if their children must do all the subjects on the same grade level every year and will have to repeat an entire grade if they do not meet the promotion requirements of that grade. And fourthly, regardless of what curriculum you use, the Bala Bill requires that parents will have to pay for the assessment by external assessors. The socio-economic impact assessment gives no indication of what the cost of such assessments will be. Will your family be able to afford external assessors? Explain what you currently do to monitor the progress of your children and why you think this is sufficient, especially in the time of a cost of living crisis. Many parents are afraid to engage with government because they fear sharing their personal information will be used to prosecute them, especially if they're not registered. It is important to note and that parents understand that parliament is a different branch of government that is separate from the provincial education departments where parents have to apply for registration. Firstly, if members of parliament would use information that they receive to prosecute parents, it would undermine their efforts to get a comprehensive input from the public. Secondly, legislation such as POPI prohibits them from sharing personal information with other branches of government. The slide shows an extract from the secretary of the PCBE that assures parents that, and I quote, "Information shared with the members remain general and at no stage are any specific written submissions by any specific parent or individual discussed." This is how confidentiality was treated during the written and oral submissions and there is no reason to believe that it will be different during the public hearings. Thank you for your attention. After viewing this video, make sure that you've joined the WhatsApp group for your province. If you have not received an SMS with the details of the WhatsApp group, check the Pestalotsi Trust Facebook page to get the links to the different WhatsApp groups.